All right, good morning, everyone. It is a little bit after 8:30. I will call to order a meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners for November 7, 2024. We will start with the roll call. Adam Clark.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Vice Chair Green. Commissioners Antor. Merchant. DeBoer.
Here.
All right. Hildenbrand.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Burl.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Breavy.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Sparks.
McLeod.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Oliver King.
Here.
Legrand.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Wooden.
Here.
Pakla.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Boujack.
Present.
Chair Stack.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 members present, four absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much for this morning's invocation. I will call on Commissioner Breavy.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. I have a prayer that I'd like to read to you. Heavenly Father, we seek your guidance and peace, unite our hearts and minds, helping us to approach one another with compassion and understanding. Grant us wisdom to make decisions that reflect justice and love. May we work together regardless of our differences to build a community rooted in respect and harmony. Let your Spirit of unity prevail, reminding us that we are all your children. Strengthen our resolve to pursue peace and reconciliation, and inspire us to be agents of hope in a divided world. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner. For our special order of business, we have a report from the Treasurer's Office, annual report. Good morning, newly re-elected Treasurer, Pete McGregor. Good morning.
Good morning. Phew. That's pretty much all I need to say right now for a lot of us. Thank you for allowing me to come in front of the Board of Commissioners and report annually on how our office in the Treasurer's Department is doing. And I know there's a few of you that probably need to get out sooner, so I'll try and stick to six or seven minutes, if that's all right, Mr. Chair.
I'm not offended at all.
You can cut me off at any time. And again, I want to extend the invitation to any of the Commissioners to come to my office and learn more about any of the information that I give you. There's some confusing stuff that is hard to present in a presentation, but, you know, sitting down with me for five or 10 minutes, you'll know as much as 90% of my office. So please come in. I'm inviting you to come in. Again, the Treasurer is the fiduciary of all the funds that come in, all the tax dollars that come into the county, and it's my number-one duty, it's my number-one duty, to protect and safeguard all the funds that come in above anything else. Most of you have seen this a few times, but it's good to review that, you know, my mission and my responsibilities, my mission is to collect the lodging and the delinquent real property taxes, manage our county funds, as I just stated. And my responsibilities come from the state constitution and also mandated through state statute as well. So I would say close to 95% of what I do is written in state statute or in our constitution, state constitution. Briefly, I want to go over, oops, my office. With me here today is Steve Orchard. He is my chief deputy. My other deputy is on a field trip with her kids at school, so I thought that being with family is a whole lot more important than sitting in this room, listening to me gab. But just briefly, I have 12 team members. I have a newer member that has been with us for about four months, and then Steve is probably our senior member who's been with us for 28?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight years. So I rely on Steve, and of course, if you come to my office, guess who else will be in there with me because he knows everything? And I appreciate that. But my team works closely with Just Team and with administration, and also with corporate counsel as well. So some of our roles, tax settlement, investment banking, property tax adjustment, revenue intake, foreclosure prevention, we offer the bilingual services. I believe I have three of the 12 in my office that are bilingual, and that's been super helpful. And of course, customer service. Serving our constituents and our citizens is very, very important. This is a picture that we found when we were going through the files, all the files down in the dungeon down there. This is a picture we found, and why I put it on here is because not only that it's from 1937, but you can see there in the back with the suspenders, I think that's Al back there that you can see in there. So I just thought that was, who would have known? That was his first time at Kent County. I wish I could just end right there. But most of what I'm going to talk about is really good news. So I have three strategic goals that I'm going to review with you here over the next couple of minutes. You can see in Reed, Goal One has to do with how I'm entrusted with the county funds and investing them through, I'm beholden to Public Act 20, PA 20, and the county's investment policy. Goal Two, you know very well, is the lodging taxes, and I collect and audit the lodging taxes. And then Goal Three is collect the delinquent real property taxes in accordance with what's prescribed in state law. And of course, when I do my financial update with you six months ago or six months from now, we talk about the investment guidelines and the SLY principle and how important this is to me doing the job for the people and making sure that we have, most importantly, safety, but then we have to be liquid for the funds that you all spend for our constituents and citizens here in this county. And of course, yield is important. It's real important right now because we're actually getting some yield, but this needs to be in this order. So I am not going to forsake safety or liquidity for yield at all. So safety is obviously number one. Liquidity, cash flow is very, very important, and then yield is a distant third. So our Goal One is to invest funds entrusted to the Office of the County Treasurer in accordance with investment policies. I just discussed in our Objective One to preserve 100% of the investment principle. We use the SLY principle, which I just reviewed, but then my guidelines are Public Act 20. And again, just to reiterate, my number-one duty is to safeguard the public funds. So Objective Two and for my first goal is to realize interest income for the general fund annually, and I just noticed right now that there's no dollar signs on there. They should have dollar signs next to them. So you can see for 2023, our investment interest or income that comes from the interest of these investments was $2.6 million, which is what, if you compare that to '22, three times more, almost three times more than was in '22, and that's because of our interest rates. There's always good and bad things to high interest rates, but here are one of the good things to the high interest rates is the ability to receive more investment income. Again, if anybody has any questions, stop me, but again, I want to get through this because I know you have a big agenda coming through here. You can't always eliminate risk. You know, I wish we could have something that had zero risk, but we don't. But we can be risk adverse or invest in things, and that's what PA 20 does, is it guides us to have the least risk possible. And you can see where the majority of our money is right now, in CDs and money markets. Those are also the most liquid, also because we are spending, this last year, we've been spending a lot, and this is, I think, just through the first six months of '24, because we're spending a lot of those ARBA dollars. We had to make sure that we had them when needed right away. We couldn't be putting them in a year, two-year, five-year, any type of treasury or long-term notes or bills. So at the bottom there, you see the rate of return in those first six months of '24. It hasn't been this high, and you look at 4.1%, you're like, oh, wow. It's not been this high since 2007. 2007, between 2007 and now, most of those times, it was even under 1%. Because I'm, you know, I can't invest in those high-risk areas, nor would I ever invest in those high-risk areas, but it's kind of nice to finally see some good average rate of returns. We, to continue on this, the county also provides a pool, or one of two counties that provide the pool, a pool, excuse me, and you can see the number of our applicants that are in the pool. We have townships, we have cities, the six authorities I listed at the bottom, the CAA, KDL, ITP, Network 180, Grand Valley Metro Council, and of course, the Airport Authority are part of that pool. Second goal in my three goals is the lodging and excise tax, and it's to collect the taxes that are due to the county. It's a very simple goal, and what we try and achieve through our objective is to audit at least 25% of those every year to make sure that we're meeting the expectations of this excise tax. I have one staff member dedicated to just doing the auditing of these excise taxes. She's visiting, she's communicating with all the different facilities that pay into the excise tax. You can see, continuing on this, the lodging and motel excise tax, you know, we are working with about 116 hotels, and that's also always growing. That includes motels, bed and breakfasts, short-term rentals. We continue to work, and I'm working with our legal team on VRBOs. We've been trying to play nice with VRBOs like we did with Airbnb. Airbnb created a voluntary type of relationship. We'd like to continue that, but if we need to get a little bit tougher, we may have to, and I'll report back to the Board of Commissioners if we need to do that. But, you know, we're charged, we need to make sure that this tax is charged. We've got to make sure it's collected, and if it's collected, we've got to make sure it's permitted to the county. We have that third checkpoint there, and you all know this, that the 3% increase is going to begin January 1. Even back when you first passed this, about a month, month and a half ago, we started sending out email notices, mailed notices to all the hotels to make sure that they're able to change their systems in regards to come January 1 to the increase from 5% to 8%. And here you can see the collections. Again, I just noticed there's no dollar sign, but these should be dollar signs. The amount collected in 2023 is greater than '22. This is something that is, oh, excuse me, I'm on the wrong slide. This is our third goal. I apologize for that. Rewind. Cut that part. This is our third goal. This is the property tax settlement portion of the three goals that our office works on, and is obviously that our goal is to collect delinquent real property taxes in accordance with the methods prescribed in state statute. And at the bottom, you see the definition of settlement. So that's what this slide is talking about, is settlement. The settlement requires that we, the county treasurer and the treasurers of each municipality, have an accounting of all taxes collected, but also the delinquent taxes collected. And that's what this graph shows, is the delinquent property taxes that are turned over to the county. And what happens is they turn over the delinquent property taxes, and then the county, I come to you and ask for a note to take out, and we take out a note, and then we pay each one of those municipalities, the cities, the townships, the villages. We pay all the millages that are on there, all the schools that are part of this that are receiving some of the property tax dollars, to make them whole so they can continue to provide the services that they do. So what I'm doing is I'm buying that debt. And you can see from '20 all the way to '23, how it has either gone up or down. '23, it spiked about $3 million more. Ask me what '24 is going to be, you know, I can't tell you that quite yet. It's on March 1st that I find that out, and I really have no idea. We don't know how many delinquencies there are going to be. I could guess, but until we know that day, that's why I asked for about $25 million in those, because I have no idea what that note is going to be for those individuals, because we really don't know who are going to pay their taxes on time and who are not going to pay their taxes on time. So even though foreclosure prevention isn't a goal, it's definitely a priority, and prevention is the main priority here. It's one of my top main priorities. As you know, through the General Property Tax Act, it takes three years to go to have a foreclosure, you're in forfeiture, that last year that you're in delinquency, but as long as we have someone who is actively working with my department, with the Treasury, with my team, that's our goal. Because once we start working with these individuals, that's when we can prevent foreclosure. And that's kind of my job out there, knocking on doors, getting in front of people, trying to make sure that they know that we are actually that one part of the government that's here to help and help these people, make sure that, you know, they don't lose their property, their home, or their investments, or their businesses. Home for Generations, this is a new program. I submitted also a summary of Home for Generations, and I believe Lisa put that in your packet or gave that to you. So it's included in the materials. It's a brief summary of that, but it's a new program that I just started up in the last couple of months, and that's teaming up with our county probate court. And this is to assist families who are in delinquency, but also they're going or trying to go through probate. Probate can be very complicated and convoluted and sometimes expensive, and people just get frustrated and they walk away. And as long as they pay their taxes, they're fine, but the home is never in their name. And that's what we're trying to achieve here, is make sure that they get all the benefits. And if you read that summary, you can see they're trying to make sure they get all the benefits of owning a home. And its tax benefits, its exemptions, its being able to just get any type of help from outside sources, especially our nonprofit sources. Unless that home is in your name, you are not going to get any help, and that's what this program is to do. Let's guide them through there, hold their hand, and guide them through that probate process so they don't lose their home. And again, our department's objective here is not to foreclose. Our objective is to get the property taxes paid. And if we focus on that, we shouldn't have to foreclose on anybody. These are just some numbers. I know you've seen this slide before. I updated it. Again, this is about prevention. This is Objective Two, preventing foreclosures. You can see if you go down to the bottom where it says foreclosures 2024, we had 22 parcels that we foreclosed on. We started out on March 1st. We foreclosed on April 1st. So on March 1st, we started out with 1,332 forfeitures. And my team were able to whittle that down to 22. You can see the prior year, '23, we only had 13. In '22, we had 28 parcels that we foreclosed on. And this is kind of focusing on April 1st of '24. We ended up with 22 parcels that we foreclosed on. 19 were vacant or unbuildable, and three were structures but unoccupied. So there was no one living in three of these structures out of the 22 that we foreclosed on. You can see at the bottom that since 2021, the average foreclosure rate has been about 23. And I point that out, and I also point out that these vacant and unbuildable and unoccupied is basically my goal. If I can get to that portion of it, then we're very, very successful. But you can see kind of the 10, 15, and 20-year averages are very high, and this is due to my team working their tails off on prevention. This is just an example of what it looks like on an unbuildable or vacant lot. It's just a tiny little piece. Why does it get to me? Who knows? But it does, and I have to foreclose, and then we end up, you know, giving it to one of those parcel owners, so then it gets back on the tax roll. But these are the type of things that we're foreclosing. When I say out of the 22, 19 were vacant or landlocked or unbuildable, this is what we're looking at. This could be someone's backyard right here. And again, this is just a letter that I got from a constituent on a parcel that was in forfeiture. I had to drive by here about four times trying to find if someone even lived there, because no one would ever answer the door, but I could tell the garbage cans were getting put out to the street, and someone was stopping by here, but no one, I couldn't get in touch with anybody. Well, this guy, Russ, his brother lived there, his father lived there, and they both passed away. And Russ would come in there once a week and try and clean things up, but he didn't even know that they were in forfeiture. And this is just a letter pointing out how, you know, it took me multiple visits. I finally caught him in his driveway. I parked right behind him, got out. I know it sounds stupid, but I did. I had 911 on my phone. Got out and just went up and had a conversation, but it's the very last, the highlighted part and the last line that I thought was pretty cool for him to say that about, and I know you can't, it's hard to see, but it says, "You are a shining example of truth, honesty, and much appreciated public servant." So that one felt good. This just shows you how complicated, how involved, how detailed our due process is when it comes to foreclosure. I'm not going to review all this. You can look at it on your own time. Our third objective in our goal to collect real property tax is, has to do with accessibility and convenience for our citizens. And this just has to do with updating and reviewing and making the ability to pay a whole lot easier for our customers, that third arrow down of the 16.4 million, approximately one-third paid online or through ACH or a credit card. So this is a convenience for the people that we serve. The very last bullet point there, out of all those that people use, it's the ACH. Almost 74% of the people use that ACH to pay their credit cards, and we don't charge a fee for that. So in new, this year, August, was being able to pay through the phone, over the phone. Some people don't have access to the internet, but to be able to call up a number and pay over the phone and be PCI compliant was key. Anybody could take a credit card over the phone, but if you want to be compliant, you know, to the standard, PCI standards, that was key. And we didn't want to do that until we were able to do that, being in compliance with PCI standards. Almost finished. Again, a big part of prevention is communication, and we have, we send out tax notices. I have brochures I put on the back table. I have a couple of them here that pretty much help people through some of these processes we have. These are what on the back table. I have them both in English and in Spanish. That's what Gustavo kind of helped me out with that, because he said, "A lot of people who can't read English throw it away." And now they won't throw it away, because some of this stuff is super important. Again, it's communication, and that's the key to our success with prevention. Obviously, you can't get through this without me talking about the AAA bond rating. I know that should have been the first thing I talked about, but here, I just want everybody to know how significant it is to the cost of borrowing and having that credit rating and how key that is. And you can see all the people who use, or all the authorities and organizations that use that AAA bond rating from Ford Airport, all the way down to our building authority. Home for Generations, again, I'm not going to describe this too much. You have the little sheet in front of you, but this is something that I will be able to report back on our success, because we just started this. I just got the blessings from our probate judges, and we're going to get their help, and we're writing out the details and descriptions of how this is going to move forward, but Home for Generations is something that I look forward to reporting back to you. And of course, 7018 is something I've talked about in the past and teaming up with our Legal Aid of West Michigan and Legal Assistance Center. These are two organizations that are helping out those citizens who, you know, the worst of the worst happened. We foreclosed on their parcel or on their property. But if the county sells that parcel for more than what was owed, they're due that remaining proceeds so they can restart their life. And the legislature made it pretty complicated how to do that, but we have both Legal Assistance Center, Legal Aid, who will help these people through that system. My office will help them through that system, make sure these people get that, can claim those excess proceeds, trying to make it easier. And of course, key collaborations, brand-new one with the probate court, but Home Repair Services, if you've never been there, you need to stop by Home Repair Services. One of the best nonprofit organizations we have here in Kent County. So make it a point for those who like to visit these. And of course, next steps is key to our access as well, but you can see all the other collaborations that we maintain. And then that is it. So I probably went over seven minutes, but the buzzer didn't go off, so I think I'm okay. But I'd be happy to take any questions. And again, if you don't have any, or if you'd rather just come and visit me at my office, be more than happy to go deeper into any one of these issues.
The buzzer was malfunctioning, but other than that. So let's see if we have questions or comments. Yes, Commissioner Hildebrand.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, that did feel like a little bit longer than six minutes.
Six and a half.
Six and a half, okay. I just wanted to commend the Treasurer. I don't really have a question, but, you know, he talked about the focus on customer service, and I have a sort of a real-life example. I had a meeting with him last week, and when he arrived, he said he was coming from a property in the northern part of the county where he was collecting a property tax check from a constituent or a property taxpayer in the county. So, I mean, when you talk about a public servant going the extra mile, he's actually, you know, he's not telling people, mail it in or call in and pay with their credit card. He's going the extra mile to pick up a check from a delinquent property tax member, and I think that's an example of a gold star standard in public service, and I think that's what we have in our county treasurer. And I wanted to commend him before this body and the public to keep it up and appreciate all he does for the county. So thanks, Treasurer McGregor.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Stack. Treasurer McGregor, thanks for being here today. Though it isn't a goal, your prevention efforts are appreciated. I think everyone knows it can take a single life event to turn someone's life tumbling, and that home is still a safe place for them. So I appreciate your efforts on that. The other thing I want to talk about, Public Act 20. I know it's very restrictive. It's there to protect money, but in this day and age, there are still other investments that are just as safe as some of these banks. Has there ever been talk in Lansing of not changing it immensely, doing little tweaks to it?
Yeah, there has. In fact, the Treasurer across the way in Grand Rapids is looking to tweak it. One of the rules is you have to invest or work with a bank or a unit that has NEXUS in the state of Michigan, and if they don't, you can't invest into that. So he wants to tweak that a little bit, and obviously, the safety has to be number one, but if there's a way to gain a little bit more revenue through an investment in, say, Iowa or Indiana, should we be allowed to do that? And that debate is still going on.
Commissioner Diaz. Oh, all right. Commissioner Legrand. It's just a habit, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question, given that we are dealing right now with the increase in the lodging excise tax. And you mentioned trying to let everyone know that that increase is coming and they have to be sending it in. Are we going to be following up on that? Are you, I mean, you said we audit 25%, but are we going to be increasing that audit, you know, percentage or doing it a little sooner if we want to make sure we're getting that extra money?
So the answer to your first part of your question is yes. We sent it out within a week after you all, you all, you all, that you voted on that increase. So we sent it out, emailed it, and hard copy, and working with the administration and lawyer, we are going to send another one out, I think, either end of November and early December, a reminder. They're going to have to change their IT systems. They're going to have to change their IT systems, their, their computer systems. So we've given them enough time. Of course, come January 1, and we start auditing, there's probably going to be a few that want to, will ask for forgiveness, and we will forgive them, but we will say, "Well, you still owe," because this is kind of what the policy is. So we'll work with people. To, to audit more than 25%, I would think I'd have to use another staff member, and I don't think that's good use of, of, of the, our money, our budget, of the people's money, because we don't have any problems with any of our hotels or motels. Every, every once in a while, there's a little communication gap. There's a new manager or new system of some sort that, that there, there's a hiccup, but there's, there's no problems out there. I think the last time there was a problem, there was a facility out there that just wouldn't pay it. But then we get the attorneys involved, we get experienced Grand Rapids involved, and we figure it out, and, and we take care of that issue. But to, to make sure that we do more than 25%, I, I don't think we need to do that because I don't think there's, there's a problem. We'd be out looking for a problem, and I'd rather use my staff in different ways than, than to look for that because we haven't had a problem up till now. It's that making sure that they go from five to eight, because though, I guarantee there'll be a few that, "Oh, I didn't know." Right. But I'll, I'll give them, I'll forgive them the first time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, real quick. First of all, I mean, my question is going to sound like I'm nitpicking, but I'm very impressed with the way you've run the office and especially helping families with foreclosures and making sure that they're not losing the property. I did hear you say, and I just want to clarify this, how you do translation services, and you mentioned that you worked with Gustavo to work on a letter, and I just wanted to know whether or not you had bilingual staff working with you on a regular basis, rather than just asking Gustavo to.
No, no. Gustavo was just advice.
Okay.
We have, uh, we had those forms back there have all state statute, their, their rights that they have. And I get them translated into Spanish through the Hispanic Center, and I use our legal department, our communications department to make sure, all right, what we're saying in English is the same as in, in another language. And so we needed to be accredited organization that does that. And so we do that. So if you go back there and can read Spanish, you will see it both in Spanish and English on, on your rights for your 7018, the surplus claims, and all the exemptions that are out there. Problem is, a lot of people who have homes don't understand their rights and their, all the exemptions that are out there. We have a lot of people who are paying taxes that are paying way too high. They're paying as if they're rentals, even though that's where they're living. So the, the city and the townships are collecting more than, than what, what these people should be paying, and that's trying to bridge that, that miscommunication with them.
Not making Gustavo translate all of your work.
No, no, I'm not.
Because I hear he has other jobs.
He, he was, he was the tipping point of, of, it was a simple conversation, it's like, "Can, can I talk about your mother?" I'm sorry. It's when you talk about someone's mother, you always want to ask for permission. She would get something in English, for some reason, for something, and she, she couldn't read it. And he said she'd throw it away. And that was the aha for me. It seems simple, seems super simple, but we, my department hadn't translated into a different language ever. And, you know, I'm going to give him the credit. I'll do all the work, but he can have the credit for, for us doing that. And, and I wish I could get it translated into more and, and any input or, you know, I'd be happy to try and do that as well, because a lot of it is just, hey, let's have a conversation and we can fix this.
All right, anyone else? If not, just two things. First of all, thank you for all the work that you do, Peter, and, and your staff. I think we particularly appreciate that you don't just accept as is, you're always looking for, "How can we do it better for this community?" And I think that's what we love to see about what's going on there. And then secondly, just a personal note. So back in 1978, a group of us came together and established Home Repair Services of Kent County. One of the purposes was to make it the best nonprofit in the county. And here, 45 years later, you've established that we met that goal.
Yeah, it is. We send everybody there. It's awesome.
Chair Steck, I was four.
I was three.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, let's move to public comment. First opportunity for public comment, I think we had a sign-up sheet, so we'll do that, but we'll go through those that have signed up first, and then I will open up, if you did not sign up, and still give you an opportunity. Each of you that have signed up, please identify yourself by name. I think it's announced by name as well. You have up to three minutes. Thank you.
Our first card is Rick Nguyen from ABC.
Good morning.
I stand first up. Good morning. Thanks, Chair Steck, County Commissioners and staff. I'm here today to speak in favor of Resolutions A, B, and C. I am Rick Nguyen. I'm the Chair of the Grand Rapids Kent County Convention Arena Authority and the Downtown Development Authority. We've had for 20 years, the CAA has owned and operated the public assets like the arena and the convention center successfully, attracting tourists, retaining residents, and growing the local economy. The Grand Rapids Soccer Stadium proposed for downtown is the next wave of transformative projects for our region. Not only will this venue be host to the highest level of soccer in the state of Michigan, it'll also host community events like Art Prize, World of Winter, Extend the Crystal, excuse me, Chris Kendall Market to the west side of downtown Grand Rapids. If the arena, performance hall, amphitheater, stadium, and convention center all had an event at the same time, standard parking ratios show the need for 15,000 spaces. There are over 16,000 spaces within a 15-minute walk and 18,000 throughout the city. CAA and community partners will work together to ensure an event management plan that takes into account multiple modes of transportation that are in effect to mitigate any parking concerns. So thanks for your time. I urge you to support Resolutions A, B, and C.
Thank you.
Next card is Daniel Scott.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Steck, and Commissioners, Staff, Citizens. My name is Daniel Scott. You just heard. My real identity is I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you, Commissioner Breevy, for your opening prayer. Your first name means industrious. I think that's appropriate where she sits. May I just congratulate everyone that won their elections, Mr. Chairman? Including you.
You just did.
As I've said before, I'll be praying for all of you as a group, not by name. And don't hesitate to contact me if you have any special prayer requests. Especially want to congratulate those of you that continue to support and love the unborn. And let me quickly say as well, today is Veterans Day, I think, or coming up. Everyone here that's a veteran, I appreciate your service. Okay, just quickly, want to address the agenda item for Justice Office for Victims of Crime Task Force Grant to Combat Human Trafficking. I support this. And I would also recommend you maybe funnel some of this money to Sacred Beginnings. The director is Leslie King. She has a website, Sacred Beginnings, right here in the city. And she's especially important to us because one of our churches is on South Division, the old red light district of Grand Rapids. She used to be in sex slavery, and the Lord delivered her, and now she has begun Sacred Beginnings, where she is indeed rescuing women and children all over Grand Rapids and now all over Michigan from sex slavery. So she didn't ask me to come here, but that would be a worthy organization to also funnel some of this $70,000, I see. And, yeah, so she's done a great work. She continues to do it. And my little plug for her support. Thank you very much.
Our next card is Josh Lunger.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Excited to be here. My name's Josh Lunger. I'm the Vice President of Government Affairs for the Grand Rapids Chamber. We represent about 3,000 employers across greater Kent County and west Michigan, here to support items A, 8, A, B, and C. I, I think, trying not to continue to repeat, as much as we love to talk about these projects, it's been a long path, and we're nearing a, a couple major finish lines on it. Obviously, you've all seen the data on the big picture items, the job creation, the economic impact and activity that will be created by this project as well as the ones happening to the south of it. But I also want to highlight some of the, what I hear from some of the small businesses. We're spending a lot of time right now with some of the things going on impacting especially retail and restaurant industries and hospitality. There's some tough challenges still. COVID was a start, but they continue to struggle. And there's a lot of excitement and positivity despite this when they look at the opportunities for activation, vibrancy, related to the crowds that these assets will draw. Particularly, when we, when we pulled the data from Ticketmaster, we know that summer is a slow time for the hospitality industry. It's also a slow time for our major venues, and now we are going to have assets, including the soccer stadium, that will be active throughout the warmer months especially. And, and I know that our, our experts are planning ways to make it a full year, a full year asset, but I, I think there's a lot of excitement about what it could mean for stability and continued revenue for those employers already here, as well as those that will move here. So again, I, I think we're just so fortunate that our community has the stick-to-itiveness to execute these type of big projects together. It's been all hands in from business, community, nonprofit, neighborhood groups, and the impact will be felt region-wide. And so we're so excited to be here today, and hopefully, it's the last time we have to talk about it in front of you for a minute, except for when we're celebrating the things ahead with groundbreaking and naming and all that great stuff. So thank you for your support. We strongly urge it and look forward to the next steps.
Thank you.
Our next card is Dee Jones.
Good morning. How you doing, everybody? I'm Dee Jones. I stay at 967 Temerack, and I just wanted to say I'm just happy for the soccer stadium. I drive by the, the street courts over there on my side of town a lot, and I see a lot of people playing soccer over there. And I actually used to play soccer. I'm Haitian, I'm French. If you guys didn't know, I'm not just African-American and Indian, I am French. And I've played soccer, and I was on my soccer team. The Hispanics beat us. They were pretty good. I ain't gonna lie. They definitely beat us in the championship, and I definitely love Hispanic people. I'm not a hater. I still remember losing, but I just wanted to say that I'm very excited for the soccer stadium and that I know it's going to have a cool economic impact on our city. I'm very, very excited for the soccer stadium, just being able to see people be able to have access to it. Hopefully, we'd be able to get equitable access to the stadium and do some esports events at the stadium. They do have the FIFA E. It's called FIFA if you, FIFA E, if you guys look at it, and it's the electronic sports, which is esports. It's the professional esports league that they have for FIFA. So hopefully, as the soccer stadium gets built, we'll be able to do some cool things for the soccer stadium. But I like seeing people outside at the street courts. I think it helps people be able to dream big. I'm a person that dreams big, and I can't wait to say the next thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next card is Mike Gusweiler.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Steck, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. Let me start by telling you, first of all, I'm Mike Gusweiler, President of the West Michigan Sports Commission. But thank you for all that you do and your willingness to serve. I know, just went through election process, and, you know, certainly, we appreciate the service that you put to this county to make it inclusive, holistic, and very successful county. The West Michigan Sports Commission was created in part in a public-private partnership out of this body to have an impact. And, you know, with all that comes across your plates, economic development and your willingness and, and interest and foresight to invest in economic development is equally important. As a sports commission, we're in our 18th year, and we've been an upward trend to continue to grow that impact. And I'm here in support of Resolutions A, B, and C, the soccer stadium and what it can mean to our destination. We, you know, we look at professional sports and the rise, the Griffins, the Gold, and really what they've done to create both civic pride, but also to magnify our destination and the work that we do in attracting new business, new dollars into our community that otherwise wouldn't be here. Having these professional sports teams and the venues that, that they participate in offers our team an opportunity to continue our work and grow our work of attracting new business into our community. So certainly, our team has already begun creating a list of opportunity for the soccer stadium on non-soccer dates that would also attract people into our hotels and our restaurants. So I encourage you to support Resolutions A, B, and C, and thank you for your service. Thank you.
The last card we have is Carol Wood.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Stecks, County Commissioners and Staff. I'm Carol Wood, Executive Director of Grand Action 2.0. Just as a quick reminder, this project, this Grand Rapids Soccer Stadium, became a priority through collective work on a destination asset study. This was done with partners, including Experience GR, Downtown Grand Rapids Inc., as well as representatives from the city and county, along with various foundations and many others. The study findings were unveiled at Econ Club in 2017, which led to Grand Action prioritizing the stadium as part of a 2020 venue and attraction study, which further investigated the market and financial feasibility of such an asset. And given the positive results and market potential, we have been actively pursuing this project for a couple of years now. As Josh mentioned, the economic impact of a stadium is estimated to result in more than $5 million in new annual wage earnings in Kent County and more than six, 465 new jobs as well. With more than $388 million net new economic impact in Kent County over the next 32 years estimated, this project will quickly spur additional private investment to the tune of more than $114 million. And what that means is, on the adjacent property, new apartment units, new parking spaces, and new office and retail space will be developed as a result. And these projects don't happen on their own. It's through these intentional public-private partnerships that make these transformational projects happen in our community. And the proportion of public to private support for the stadium is like that of the Accra Shore Amphitheater. I would like to report today that our capital campaign is already at 79% of goal, and we have a planned announcement of the lead donor scheduled later this month. So I look forward to seeing you all at that event, and thank you for your support of items A, B, and C.
Thank you. Is that the last one that has signed up? All right, anyone else here from the public that wishes to address the board with respect to agenda items only at this time? If you wish to address, you may do so now. Identify yourself by name and your address, and you have up to three minutes. I see none, so we will then close public comment. I will move to the next item, Consent Agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move items A and B from the consent agenda.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner LaGrand. Questions or comments? If not, this is a roll call.
On the passage of the consent agenda, Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Antor, Merchant, DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildebrand.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Bouzak.
Yes.
And Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, 19 yeses, 0 nays, the consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to our resolutions for the day, and I will start by calling on Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 113 of today's date, agreement with the City of Grand Rapids for lodging excise tax allocation coming to us from the Administrator's Office.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Burl. Questions or comments? Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. I'll certainly be supporting this. I think it was very clear in the August vote that the soccer stadium would be an outcome of that vote. I know that we've also discussed, and I've discussed here, other supports for arts organizations in a broader level, something that may one day be similar to the Sports Commission. But I know that there's been some conversations about that, and I just wanted to note that. I don't know if Administrator Vanderburg can make a comment on that, but I do appreciate that there's been conversation on that.
Make a brief comment?
Sure. Yes. I've signed Josh Spencer to engage with a couple of different groups that are working on long-term sustainability of the arts in Kent County. And, and so I, and I think ultimately that effort could be grant-funded with the grant the city's going for, and that, you know, the idea would be that we help convene groups to find a way to more sustainability, sustainably fund the arts in the future.
Commissioner Diaz. I'm sorry, were you done?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with my colleague, Commissioner Baker, that it was made very clear in the vote that happened earlier this year that the soccer stadium would be one of the priorities or one of the projects that would move forward with the lodging excise tax. We had even public comment today expressing support and excitement for the soccer stadium. As I said before, I'm a big fan of soccer, too. I was watching the game just last night. The World Cup is coming in a couple of years, and that's going to be amazing. But I've also expressed and said that when the town halls were happening for the soccer stadium, there were multiple community members that were asking how the communities themselves would benefit, the entire county, the communities across the entire county would commit, would benefit from this project, not just the downtown area. Specifically, there were questions around how the talent that was mentioned in the public comment, not just in the Latino community, but across all of our communities, how that talent could be developed, how we could use this stadium, which is going to be paid mostly by public tax dollars, how that stadium could be a type, a type of pipeline to develop that talent, how we could host, possibly host, all of the different soccer tournaments and games that one other happened across the county and even in other counties in that soccer stadium. To be honest, I was planning on making an amendment, not to this resolution, but to a different one, the operating agreement specifically. Unfortunately, even though I was asking for it since last week, I didn't receive a copy of it until yesterday evening. And so, I don't think that it would be a responsible thing to do to try and amend that document so late in the game. I was also going to ask some of the people who are present here today, and some of these public-private entities, what type of commitments they can make to how these, this project can develop the youth and the talent in our communities. But looking back, people can say whatever they want in a public meeting such as this. What really matters is what's written down in the, what's written in the document that everybody has to legally adhere to that has not been presented to us. And so, while I appreciated that the Sports Commission, that the administration has said that the Sports Commission will develop some type of plan to how, to, to help the community benefit from this project, that should have been done a long time ago. And so, given the fact that there is going to be a substantial change in the city government, and given the fact that the voters spoke and made a change in how they see this city and this county moving forward, I don't think that we should be making this decision today. And so, I will be, I am making a motion to table this resolution until the second meeting in February to hopefully give some time to communicate with the public and have something written and how all of our communities will benefit. Thank you.
A motion to table has been made. It does require a second to be considered. Is there a second? I see no second, therefore the motion dies for lack of second.
Thank you, Chair. And lastly, I would just like to request a roll call vote on this item. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Breavy.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to express my support for this project. I think it'll be an excellent feature to our community here for all of Kent County and people that, you know, come and visit as well. I see the track record of success of the organizations that are involved, and it's exceptional. So, I also see, you know, what's happened with the Venandel Arena and DeVos Place Convention Center. They've been great assets, and I expect nothing less for the soccer stadium and all the community involvement. I also serve on the Sports Commission, so I definitely see the high need for something like this. And it'll definitely get used, and it'll be used by youth in our community, adults, and it'll be a great time. I encourage you all to attend some of the games. I'm sure it'll be quite an experience.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. Commissioner Diaz raises some interesting points, and there has been community engagement in some meetings. Perhaps we can receive a roundup of, you know, what has been done and what will, what the community, the neighborhood associations, the West Side community, the neighborhood, the community that's nearby, what they can expect going forward as this project proceeds. Are you debating whether this is appropriate?
You're asking for that now?
Well, just, right, because this, this is a big project. It's going to rely, my community did vote for the lodging excise tax to support it. They are the most involved in it, and there is a large reliance on the use of the lodging excise tax and the public money, if you will. And, and that, and the community engagement with this is something that was previously raised, and it's important, and it is continuing. But I would like it to be expressed to the community how this will be done.
So, you're asking for a summary of how this will roll out going forward? Tell me more.
How, how this project, this is an enormous project in a tiny space, in a sort of cramped travel area, and community engagement and working with the community to make this all happen in a fairly seamless, won't be seamless, but, you know, in a, in a cooperative type of fashion, and how that will be done, to just taking the broad overview, not any specifics. But I know we've already have meetings that are being set up. There is an attempt here to work with the community, just elaborate on that a little bit.
Okay. I'm just trying to get clear, who am I to ask to respond to the question? Probably Kara.
I would say Kara.
Yeah.
Great question. And yes, we do plan to engage the neighbors and local business owners. We're not at a place yet where we can actually have that conversation. These decisions are really important to that progress, and we're not planning construction until next spring, so that gives us lots of time to work with local residents, business owners, and engage in conversations about what the, what the plan of progress will be, what those milestones will be, and how they can receive information and updates on a variety of different things, whether it's street closures or, or construction progress. And we will make sure that we have a very close relationship with all that were engaged in the process. We had over 300 individuals engaged throughout the variety of different focus groups and conversations we had with communities. So, we plan to make every effort to make sure that, that folks are well informed about the project and have an opportunity to engage and let us know when there are concerns.
All right. Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to echo Commissioner Breavy's appreciation for all of the work that's gone into this. I think we, as a board, have had lots and lots of clear communication on this. And as Commissioner Baker alluded to, the vote in August was very clear that this was one of the projects that we would be moving forward. My biggest hesitation is that $100 million from the county is a lot of money from the lodging and excise tax. We have the funds now. We have the system set up like that. It feels a little bit like maxing out a credit card, making an estimation that we will always have the revenue. But I take solace in the fact that we have lots and lots of pressure-relief valves built into the operating agreements to make sure that, as was discussed previously, county general funds would not be used for this project going forward. So, I am looking forward to this project. I think it's going to be a good addition to our county and hope that we continue to have the success and even further than the estimated success in our lodging and excise tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner LaGrand.
Thank you, Chair. Since this resolution is really only talking about the allocation of the excise tax, I just want to echo Commissioner Baker's concerns, or, you know, just speaking up for the possibility that eventually this money will be used for other things, potentially for mini grants to municipalities or smaller communities around the county, especially with matching grants. Also, just simply want to say again that I did ask and was told that this could be used at the zoo, that that would fall into the, you know, that, that work at the zoo could also fall under, this money could be used for that support, like perhaps a parking structure or something, somewhere down the line. But given that we are supporting our local assets, I will be supporting this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair. A quick point of inquiry. Do you want me to address the, well, Resolution B, as other commissioners have addressed, like the whole project, or would you like me to follow that?
I, I, there are three of them here that are reasonably connected together, so that's fine.
All right, thank you.
As long as you don't repeat yourself the next time.
I will make sure that does not occur. So, this project does make me a little bit wary because of the dollar sign, but I wanted to share that my constituency did vote in favor of the increase in, in the lodging excise tax. And I do appreciate that no general fund, as Commissioner Pakla said, is used for this. So, I am, I will be voting in favor of this, but at the same time, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned of how we go in the future. And I would like to ensure that, you know, no more county revenue or dollars is going to be spent to this project, just because I'm getting a little bit concerned with that increase in dollar sign for funding some of these projects. So, I just, I just wanted to share a little bit of my concern, but I am in favor of it. My constituency supported it. And while I have voted against it in the past when this project was initially presented, I'm more inclined to support the voting of my constituents.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else? I see no one else. This is a roll call. There is a voice vote, but we request for a roll call, so.
On Resolution 113, Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Antor, Merchant, DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildebrand.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Teal. Sparks.
Yes.
McCloud.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King. LaGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz. Bouzak.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, 18 yeas, 1 nay. The motion is adopted.
Thank you.
We'll move to the next resolution. I will call on Commissioner Hildenbrand.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move Resolution 114 of today's date. It's an agreement with the Grand Rapids Kent County Convention and Arena Authority for soccer stadium and amphitheater bond reserve funds from the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Breavy. Questions or comments on this one? I don't see any. We probably have already commented. If not, this is a roll call. Please take the roll.
On Resolution 114, Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Antor, Merchant, DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildebrand.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McCloud.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz. Bouzak.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, 18 yeas, 1 nay. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to the next item, and I will again call on Commissioner Hildenbrand.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move Resolution 115 of today's date. It's the restated Grand Rapids Kent County Convention and Arena Authority operating agreement from the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Breavy. Questions? Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was wondering if Administrator Vanderburg could just provide a little more clarity on one line in the last paragraph of the resolution, where it talks about providing more flexibility to when the CAA may share operating surpluses with the City of Grand Rapids and the county. Could you just provide a little clarity on what that change to the operating agreement looks like?
Yeah, I think the original language was when the CAA was first created. And I think that we did decide that we could add more flexibility in that. Linda, you negotiate, help negotiate the specifics of that.
In the original operating agreement, there were no specific numbers as far as a threshold, so that when operating reserves got to a particular threshold, they had to be set half and half to the city and the county. But the language said, they shall be sent half and half to the city and the county. So, what this amendment did was it established some thresholds, and it also changed the shall to a may. So, that way, if CAA comes to us and says, yes, our, our reserves are a little bit higher, but we have these particular plans for them, or there's this coming up that we need to plan for, that give the flexibility for the CAA, on which we have two members on the board, the chair and the administrator, so that we have a voice on the CAA board, and we can take a look at what they're saying and why they want to let their reserves grow.
And as a quick follow-up, that decision then rests solely with the CAA because it's now a may?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to request a roll call vote.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners on this resolution? I don't see any. Roll call vote was requested. Will you please take the roll?
Resolution 115, Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Antor, Merchant, DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildebrand.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Teal. Sparks.
Yes.
McCloud.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz. Bouzak.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, 18 yeas, 1 nay. The resolution is adopted.
All right. Thank you. For our next item, I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 115, oh, excuse me, 116, the Steelcase Foundation contribution to support the childcare task force from the Administrator's Office.
And supported by Commissioner Pakla. Questions or comments on this? Yes, Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As one of the two commissioners that sits on this task force, I just wanted to send appreciation for this. I think it is money well-spent. We have a fantastic facilitator that is guiding us through those conversations, and I am very appreciative to the Steelcase Foundation for these dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein, did you have?
Thank you, Chair Steck. So, I guess my question is, I mean, thanks for the contribution from the Steelcase Foundation. This was an issue that came up on the Ready by Five villages, childcare. I've always said that one thing government does well is study things, and we study them to death. What is, what is the exact end game of the task force? And is it really by studying the issue really going to get to the root cause?
So, I'll, I'll answer that question if I might, because it was my committee. If you'll recall, at the time of the request for the Ready by Five Village renewal and expansion, I appointed a subcommittee to engage in an analysis and recommendation. That was chaired by Commissioner Breavy. That committee came back with a recommendation for submitting a proposal to the voters, as well as the recommendation to proceed with a study and analysis of, of the question of childcare cost issues and, and concerns as to, one, what's the nature of that circumstance or crisis in the county? What are the available recourse, both private and public? And is there an appropriate role for the county to play or not? And if so, what that might be. So, that's the spectrum of what that was requested. I felt that was an appropriate request. I did agree with that, appointed a subcommittee under Rule 61, help me out here, 61, for purposes of putting together a study task force to look at that spectrum of issues, really what is the nature of the childcare crisis in Kent County specifically? What are the strategies that are being pursued publicly and privately to respond to those? Is there any role the county should be considering? And if so, what that might look like? And then coming back with a recommendation by September of next year, sorry, this is on the, on the come here a little bit. And then once that report comes in and recommendation comes in, then it will be taken up. And then coming back with a recommendation by September of next year, sorry, this is on the, on the come here a little bit. And then once that report comes in and recommendation comes in, then it will be taken up, pursuant to Rule 61, to be considered by the chair, whoever that might be, to determine whether it's compliant and whether or not there's any further action. So that, that's a brief summary of it.
Well, thank you. That's what I enjoy about you, is your brief summaries.
He comments facetiously. Touche. All right. Any, any other comments? Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I wasn't planning on speaking on this item. I do support it, but since the conversation drifted a little bit towards the cause of the crisis, I thought I would speak on it a bit. And my view really comes down to two things. The people who we expect to take care of our youngest among us are not paid as they should be. And there's a lot of regulation that limits how many childcare centers can be opened. Back when I was going to be, or studying to be a high school teacher, I observed a childcare center in the Granville area, I'm pretty sure it's in Commissioner Stan's district. And the things that they teach those children at a very young age are amazing, sign language and how they can speak for themselves. Toddlers who you would think haven't awakened their consciousness yet to be able to do something like that, but it really is amazing. I will not be here after this year, but if there's one thing that I would recommend to my colleagues is, when you are developing your priorities, your legislative priorities for next year, I would recommend looking into some of the programs that have been developed in other parts of the country, partnerships that can be made between government, the parents who need these services, and the private industry. There's ways that the cost can be shared among those groups to make sure that the people who need these services can access them. I don't have any kids myself, but I do have nieces and nephews. And I don't think, I would, I don't think I am the only person who, who knows somebody, whether it's friends or family, who have kids and who are struggling trying to make ends meet. Parents who have to work different shifts to try and make ends meet, to try and pay those bills. And so if this board in the future can advocate to our state and federal legislators to actually address these things and do something about it, instead of sticking, staying in the study mode, it would go a long way. So as I've said before, I will be gone until mid-January, but rest assured, I'll be coming back here and reminding you all of some of those things. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? All right, if not, just, just a couple of comments, additional comments. The, this is committee, I think, is, is taking on a challenging issue for this community, and they're doing it intentionally. We worked hard at trying to establish a diverse community that has diverse perspectives, comes from different places. And I was very pleased to see that we could get a facilitator capable as she is to do this, and certainly pleased that Steelcase was willing to step up and provide the funding to do that. So I certainly support this motion. If nothing else, this is a voice vote. I don't think anyone asked for a roll call, so this is a voice vote. All those in favor of this resolution, please say yes. Those that oppose, please say no. It is approved. All right, moving on, I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move the Resolution 117 of today's date, commodity supplemental food program, commodity credit corporation fund for fiscal year 2025, brought to us by Community Action.
Thank you. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments on this one? Mr. Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Whenever I see that word commodity in anything, it's a method to treat products or anything so people can hedge and try to make profits off of that. I think food is one of the most important things. I can't say that I trust the United States Department of Agriculture to provide nutritious, healthy food into it, just going to the supermarket and see all the junk food that is given out. I was wondering if I can just get some, I'm not on the finance committee, so I couldn't ask the questions. It states that, you know, that they want to purchase more nutritious foods. I don't know what that, the definition of that, add more things into it to make it, you know, nutritious, or use the original product that's grown out on the farm. Is there someone here that can give me what, you know, in addition to, and then more so, how do they come up with nutritious options definition? And finally, the satisfaction of the people that this food is given to? I see a lot of times in these, well, my mother had seniors' meals, you know, questioned strongly the food that's given out. I think nutrition's one of the things that is lacking, so.
Thank you. Gustavo, are you able to answer Commissioner's question?
That's all right.
More succinctly than I do?
That's all right. Thank you for the question, Commissioner. So this is a new program for us. We've never run something like this before. Usually, the, the government gives us some funding, and we've always kind of said, no, we're not really in our wheelhouse, but this is something that is definitely in our wheelhouse. We already tried to provide a nutritious box, and this is specifically for seniors. And it's, it's a pretty hefty box. It's mostly shelf-stable food. This is an opportunity for us to also provide, you know, locally sourced produce, which is lacking in that, in that box. And a lot of canned goods are in there, but we want to give something a little fresh. We are working with the purchasing to identify partners that can help us source some of that locally grown produce. It is going to be seasonal. We're hoping we get really started in 2025, and as the year progresses, we get some, some different products in there. So the government is entrusting us to identify vendors, providers, that can help us do that. And we're going to try to stretch the dollars as much as we can to make it last. And what we're hoping is that if we can do this and be able to provide this service to our aging seniors, that we're going to be able to request those dollars every year, and this program can grow incrementally. And so we're hoping that, you know, we've never done this, but we're hoping we'll be able to make an impact with it. So we're really going to try to identify vendors, providers, that can help us stretch the dollar. We usually try to go with the lowest bid, but if we're able to find really good produce and it's worth the amount of dollar, and purchasing is able to help us identify those, then we're going to be able to give really good stuff for some of those seniors. And I can tell you, we do a survey on all the programs that we have, and we go anywhere from ninety-six to ninety-eight percent success of, you know, isn't the word here, but ninety-six to ninety-eight percent satisfaction score. And our goal is ninety-five percent, but we're always somewhere around ninety-six and ninety-eight percent. So we will survey folks that receive the box, so they can tell us, hey, is this, is this working or is it not working? And we will adjust, as we do every year, with the feedback we get from the community.
Thank you. Appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, this is a voice vote. Those that support the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, please say no. It is approved. Thank you, Gustavo.
Thank you, everyone.
For our next and last resolution, I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 118 for the Department of Justice Office for Victims of Crime Task Force Grant to Combat Human Trafficking from the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Diaz. Questions or comments on this motion? Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I see that the sheriff is in the room, and I'd like to ask her a question, if I may. As I've mentioned in the past, I'm currently a grad student at Indiana University, and we just so happened to be talking about human trafficking and labor trafficking this past week. One of the cases that we studied was a study, was a case in the 2018 era from the previous administration. And basically, what happened there is, as we all know, there are a lot of minors who are migrating to the United States, unaccompanied minors. And unfortunately, during the previous federal administration, the guidelines and the parameters for who those children were, were released to were relaxed. And that meant that a lot of minors ended up working in places that they had no business working in, a lot of food manufacturing places, people literally being, it was modern-day slavery, essentially. We had a case, I believe, last year of minors being found in one of the food manufacturing places in our, in our county. And I guess my question is, I believe you've said in the past, Sheriff, that it's happening. I mean, clearly, we're passing that it's happening in our county, but I'm curious as to the extent of it. Is it, what kind of things are we seeing? Is it sexual trafficking? Is it labor trafficking? What are, what are you seeing?
So I'm just going to backtrack. We've had a previous grant, starting in 2021, which is where we created the task force. The initial focus of that task force was really trying to get up to speed in the law enforcement community and also the human services communities to identify victims of human trafficking in different ways. Largely, law enforcement focuses on, we get a call for service, we go deliver the service, people identify themselves as a victim, or somebody else will identify them the victim, and that's just not the case in human trafficking. And so we really had to develop mechanisms to find victims in new ways. And so that was the focus of the first grant. And I'll tell you, our stats kind of built in that way. 2023, we had about sixty-three victims that were identified, where we were able to bring cases to fruition and, and get them support. 2024, it's almost double that. It's not that the actual events themselves are doubling, it's that our awareness and how astute we've become on identifying people who need help. Generally speaking, we do largely see sex trafficking victims, but we do also know of many labor cases that are out there. You identified one that was a couple years ago from a local manufacturer. I'd say that's fairly common nationally, not so common locally, but it does happen locally. And so when those cases appear, we, we coordinate the resources to help do the investigation. In that context, that was more of a federal investigation, but we are the only local entity who are doing sex trafficking, or, sorry, human trafficking cases. And we work with all the area departments, including the feds, to help share that expertise and leverage our resources effectively. Did that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it did. Thank you. And, you know, I, I respect the, the will of the voters. The voters came out in mass numbers and made their voices heard. I respect that. But I think this is something that we need to keep in mind, the dangers, the, for lack of a better term, the trickle-down effects of deregulation. When these protections are removed or weakened at the federal level, ten thousand steps above us, these are the effects that happen, the downstream effects that happen in our communities. And so, again, I will not be here after this year, but I'm looking forward to working with you on those types of issues and trying to protect the most vulnerable people in our communities. Thank you.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I'll, I'll, I'll keep it short. I, you know, any money we can put at this problem is needed. I have a hundred percent confidence that the sheriff and her department will use these funds as wisely and, and efficiently as possible, but this is a huge problem. It, it, it isn't something new. We, we may live in a sheltered community where we can spend hundreds of millions of dollars to build transformational projects, is, I guess, the new buzzword, but people's lives are being destroyed by human trafficking. And we're kidding ourselves if we can't, I mean, look the other way, because it's not happening here. It is happening here, and most of it goes unnoticed. And I just, you know, this has got to be a priority. You know, I, I've seen the movies, I've read the books. It's just horrible what we allow to be done with our children in this country, whether they came here legally or illegally, I don't care. It's a child, and they're being abused, and it's often, too often overlooked. One would only need to look at Jeffrey Epstein, and we've never had full closure on that, but they, the same thing, but just at a different level, and maybe at different levels, things we just look the other way. But we got to stop not looking at this, and we've got to find even more funds to assist the sheriff and her department to try to get help to all those that need it.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, this is a roll call.
On Resolution 118, Commissioner, Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Antor, Merchant, DeBoer, Hildebrand.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Bouzak.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, of nineteen yeas, zero nays, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you. For our next item, we'll move to public comment. This is a public comment on general matters before the jurisdiction of the county. If you have a matter that you wish to address to this board, you may do so now. Please identify yourself by name, your address, and you have up to three minutes. Good morning again.
Good morning again. I'm still Daniel Scut. As I've said here before, I am not a Republican or a Democrat, but I vote according to the holy scriptures, but after this week's elections, I can say, praise the Lord, for many unborn Americans now will be saved from genocide and gruesome murder. Those parts of our country that voted for politicians that love the unborn. I'd just like to remind those of you under the sound of my voice, I believe you'll be taking oaths of office soon. I emphatically remind you about the oath you're about to take. Scripture says, holy scripture says, "When you shall swear an oath to the Lord your God, you shall not slack to carry it out. For the Lord your God will surely require it of you, and it will be a sin to you." I have in front of me parts of the County of Kent oath. Quote, "I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of county commissioner." State Constitution excerpt, Articles 1 and 2. "No person shall be denied the equal protection of the laws, nor shall any person be denied the enjoyment of civil, political rights, or be discriminated against in the exercise thereof because of religion, race, color, or national origin. The legislature shall implement this section by appropriate legislation." I'd like to remind you that in 1850, black slaves in America were considered not a person. In 1945, Jews in Europe were considered not a person. Today, in our country, and in our state, and in our city, the unborn are considered not a person. The scriptures say they are. Further reading of the Constitution. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility..." I believe if you could ask these babies that are being torn apart right at 425 East Cherry, their heads crushed, their body parts sold, if they are having domestic tranquility, they would say no. You are going to be swearing, I believe, to protecting them. I hope you keep your oath. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Kick my headphones. How you doing, everybody?
Good morning.
I'm Dee Jones, passionate entrepreneur and visionary. So, the election, I'm, I ain't gonna lie, I'm not too proud of the election. I, I'm, I'm not too proud of Donald Trump being the president again, and I'll publicly say that. And I don't care about anybody's opinion on that because I have my own opinion. And I just care about our economy, and I just don't think that he's going to do what's best for everybody, not just the rich people, not Republicans, not billionaires, but I don't think he's going to do things for people that was on Social Security, like I grew up on Social Security, and I grew up on Medicare, and I grew up on Medicaid, and I grew up on Social Security, like I said, and I was in special education, and I care about our education system. And all of the work that I've done has been able to improve our education, our society holistically. And I don't know if he's going to do things about gun violence and all of these things around America, but I know I just got a $10,000 partnership when I pitched for the Safe Pitch Task Force, so I'm not thinking about what Donald Trump is going to do because I'm going to focus on what I can do for America, what I can do for my city, what I can do for my county, what I can do for my state, what I can do for my nation, because you guys know what I've done. You guys have seen me advocate. Nobody in here can tell me that they haven't heard of Dee Jones's work and how he's been able to do for the community, but you can look at our political leaders across America, and you can't tell me that they've done what's best for Americans, that they truly done what's best for Kent County, that they've truly done what's best for the city, that they've truly done what's best for this nation. But me being the ethical leader and the pioneer, I'm going to change the universe one day. I, I'm not religious like Daniel over here. I truly believe that we create our own reality. I'm a very spiritual being. I'm Haitian, I'm French. I don't see the things that you guys see, I don't see, you know, how, I don't see the Christian views that you guys have, but I do believe we coexist in however you guys view the world. I believe that we coexist, and we should love each other regardless of our differences, regardless of our political views and how we view the universe around us. I believe we should all love each other, and we should do what's best for this nation, because that's what I've done. And I'm going to do this. I have a partnership with the city, and I'm going to continuously do the things like me partnering with Kent County and me helping improve our justice system. And I sat on a call with 13 people from North Carolina in the biggest gaming publishing company, and I'm actually pulling strings and helping them improve their justice system there. One day, I'm going to improve the nation's justice system, because I know other politicians and political leaders and other people believe in the things that I'm doing because I have our city's support. When you guys come here and you legislate, you do this here in the city that I live in, and I'm going to step up and lead. I'm going to step up and do, get in the trenches, and I'm going to stop everything that I can do with the power that I have, with this passion and energy that I have. I'm sick of people just thinking that racism is just good for America, and then it's not. But I'm going to do this ethically with everything that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Brad Cohen, and I represent IC Solutions, a division of TKC. We're the largest provider of correction services in the country. Just awarded recently the, uh, the state of Illinois, and we have 500 locations. We provide services at the federal level and over 500 counties across the country. In 2017, we were awarded services here by Cal Brinks, by then-under Sheriff Michelle LaJoy Young. Sheriff, is she still here? I'm Michelle. As well as Chief Deputy DeWitt. So, we sent a letter out to you. It has three major points regarding the recent award to Smart Communications that I just wanted to cover for you, cover with you real quick, and then I'll be done. So I'm writing to, to address the concerns to Smart Communications, specifically the award to Smart will result in higher costs to the inmates, families, and lower revenues to the county. Does not serve the best interest of Kent County taxpayers, inmates, and their families. The selective proposal will result in substantially higher costs to the inmates' families. An example was currently, they can send messages on the tablets that we provide at 25 cents. That's going to be doubled to 50 cents. Currently, they can send a message, a photo for 25 cents, that's being raised to a dollar. So, we have a big concern there. We have, we provided attachments. Everyone was sent this email, okay, here, along with the three attachments, but it lowers revenue to the county by as much as $1,964,488. IC Solutions also provided multiple options, which included lowering, uh, lower pricing and higher revenue to the county. One solution offered $1 million signing bonus paid upfront at renewal. However, that was rejected by the Kent County purchasing as they believed it would be a violation of the FCC order. IC Solutions is well aware of and in full compliance with FCC regulations, and we maintain that such offer did not violate the order. Nonetheless, all of IC Solutions offered, provided lower costs to the inmates and families and higher revenues to the county in comparison with Smart's offer. The revenue lost to the county in selection of Smart over IC Solutions will necessitate increased taxpayer funding over the essential services. Second, the scoring errors that were made in the evaluation process. Obvious errors were made in the scoring criteria, both in rates, surcharge, and commission, as well as pricing methodology, which evaluates scoring pricing to ensure the lowest possible cost will be paid by the inmates and friends and family in the commission to the county. Smart received higher scores in these categories. Given that Smart received higher scores and having higher costs to services, the scoring of these categories is obviously incorrect. Further, discrepancies are concerning as these categories should have been evaluated through a straightforward mathematical calculation comparing the pricing and the commissions. It was also noted that the valuation provided inconsistent scores across these categories, further raising questions about the evaluation methodology. Impact of the FCC. The FCC rules are expected to dramatically, the FCC hasn't ruled yet?
Okay.
Okay, so just FYI. You've all been sent this. Here's some hard copies for you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If, if you'll give them to the other side. Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Good morning, Chair Sturken and Commissioners. My name is Cindy DeBoer, and my husband and I live at 114 Valley on the West Side, and I'd like to express the concerns of my community on the issue of zoo parking. It's my understanding that it's now uncertain when this matter will come to a vote, so I just want to express today what it's like to live across the street from the park while you anticipate the zoo's next proposal. When the green space off of Valley was still a green space, we observed group activities using that space every day, 365 days a year. Then without notification, gravel trucks rolled in and turned the field into a gravel parking lot. But interestingly, we still see park activities happening there. The Sacred Heart Kids Track Football Practices, they're all risking injury as they play on a gravel field and dodge parked cars. I have many pictures revealing serious safety concerns because kids are just desperate to find a place to play. They still come to John Ball Park because they have nowhere else to go. Last October, last October, the zoo CEO stood here and said things like, "We're committed to building a berm, so even if a car wanted to, they couldn't access that green space. We're committed to re-tilling and reseeding the soil to return it to a lush field. We'll change the operating agreement to contractually bind us to never use the remaining green space for cars," and I have the support of my board. He said those things. So we were shocked and dejected when only months later, he stood before you and said, "We've been consistent in our messaging that this green space would be used for overflow parking." This postcard from the zoo regarding the new parking lot, as well as the banners that are on the fences currently surrounding the construction zone, show a park rendering with the field off of Valley depicted as a lush green space without any parking. This is so misleading. Visitors and neighbors alike view images believing them to be true and accurate, but they are not. I mean, can you see why we are feeling duped? My community, including my neighbors, teachers at the zoo school, even the priest at Sacred Heart, were promised that when the zoo paved the 12 acres on the southwest side of the park, the field off of Valley would return to a green space in perpetuity, and now that's in jeopardy. Listen, none of us hate the zoo. I have two grandkids, and I take them there all the time. My husband and I are members. We simply hold a strong belief that there exists a creative solution to this problem where all parties are satisfied. When this matter does come to a vote, I urge you to hear the cries of the West Side residents who for decades have watched in shock and dismay as their favorite gathering spot is slowly gobbled up by zoo parking, and honor them by preserving this last little sliver remaining of their park in perpetuity. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. Fred Sawyer, 301 Morris Avenue, Grand Rapids. I'm here for another reason today, but I felt compelled to just stand up and speak on some other things that I've heard today. And each day when I leave, leave my house, I pass by the Planned Parenthood on Cherry Street, and I see people there expressing their constitutional rights to protest their beliefs and, and put all that. I would request, though, that this board, that you've been asked to think about your oath, I would ask you to think about that oath and how that constitutional right might be intimidating to the, to the women who go to that facility for simple health procedures. And if there's anything that you can do within your oath with the city of Grand Rapids to maybe consider how you would support both sides of that, I would appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? If not, we will close public comment, and we'll move to the next item, Administrator's Report. And ask our administrator, Alexander Brick, to report.
Sure, just a couple items today. First, congratulations to everyone who won reelection, and also congratulations to those who are leaving us to pursue other, other things in life. We certainly look forward as a staff to work, continue to do the important work of Kent County with our new board that will be seated with some more new members of January 1st. Also, with so many of our, our partners on the soccer stadium in the room, I don't know if anyone can fully appreciate what it takes to stand up a huge project like this, but certainly Grand Action, Convention Arena Authority, Grand Rapids, also working in concert with the Sports Commission and experienced Grand Rapids. It's a huge undertaking, there's a huge amount of detail that gets covered, and I know that we just appreciate the partnership and the ability to make transformational, positive transformational change that will impact not only our county, but West Michigan and beyond. Also, we're busy working on, you know, soccer stadium is one of a number of very important initiatives that could go before the board yet this year, and we're working on a number of those other initiatives. Also, putting the finishing touches on the strategic plan to present to executive and then to the board, and we'll be working on the accompanying strategic communications plan with that as well. And I think that's good for today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Then move to reports, general reports from Commissioners. Any reports? Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. I have a brief report from the airport. Commissioner Burrow sent out the latest and greatest stats of our ever-growing and always-successful airport. But I just wanted to highlight, at the end of October, Congresswoman Sculton, she had a press conference at the airport about our air traffic control tower, which we've been trying to relocate for over 30 years now. And she's really making some great headway with partners in Congress and also at the federal level, and I really appreciate all the work that she's done. From what I hear, we're second in line, right behind the airport in Miami, to get a new tower. So she's been working, I think the term was, like a bulldog to get this done. So I'm grateful that she's returning to Congress to continue this work, and hopefully she can find some additional partners to move this forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't see any. I was hoping to have our clerk give a report on elections, but I think she's still meeting with the canvassers, so we will perhaps do that at the next meeting. No other reports, we'll move to miscellaneous. Does anyone have miscellaneous? Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. Well, first of all, before I get into, I was wondering if our administrator can, after this meeting at some point, send out some information on the gentleman that commented on the jail and the services there, and the email that was sent to us. I must have not read it all the way through when I, when it was sent to us, but it was some concerning information in that public comment. I am, there are so many things that I could talk about after this week's election. I'm proud that, if I'm not mistaken, Michigan broke records for the turnout. I think it was like over 70%. And I think that'll go a long way in dispelling myths about whether turnout helps one particular party or the other. The people made their voices heard, and everybody needs to respect that. I'm very happy and proud that while I was, while I became the first Latino in our county's history elected to this board in 2022, I will be succeeded by the first Latina to sit on this board. I think she's going to be a great addition to this board, and I look forward to seeing the work that she does with those of you who will be here after this year concludes. I said this, mentioned this at probably our first meeting in 2023, or one of our first meetings, but I think it's important to, to mention it again. In 2022, I'm reading from this article that was published in Bridge, Michigan, December 7th, 2022, my birthday, actually. "Gerrymandering Never Died in Michigan Is Still Haunts County Board's Vote." In 2022, the Republican Party won a majority of seats with 50% of the vote. I haven't gotten a chance to look at the data for this election yet, but clearly that gerrymander held. And I think, I always wonder, every time that I came to these meetings over the past two years, I always wondered what this county's government would look like if our county government was not gerrymandered. And for example, we had a public comment just today, talking about the zoo and the parking there. And I noticed that when that public commenter was speaking, most of the people around this dais were looking down and not looking at that person. And I can't help but wonder if this county's government actually reflected the will of our constituents. Would that still happen? Would the games that were played by the zoo for the last couple of years have happened? Would these millions of dollars that were spent on these projects, would they have gone through? When I drove here this morning, I had to go over the highway and then come back down because of all the construction going around. And I drove by countless of our unhoused neighbors who are out on the streets just as it's getting colder for the winter. What would the priority of this government look like if this county was not gerrymandered? And so, again, I will not be here after this year, but I know that one of my priorities will be fighting and working towards a future where the elections that our constituents participate in, whether they're federal, state, local, whatever, that they're all fair. We have fixed that problem at the federal and the state level, and the people made their voices heard, and the Democrats last, lost their trifecta. I respect that because the Democratic Party on Lansing could have done a lot more, and they didn't, and now they're paying the consequences. Until the people who are elected in this county's government are also able to face those consequences, the real will of the people will not be heard. I encourage you all, while there are some people here in the public who talk about our constitution, I encourage all of my colleagues to look at the state constitution and to look at the first article. I don't have it in front of me, so I can't recite it word for word, but it says something along the lines of "All political power resides in the people." I look forward to that day being a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Green.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Briefly, I just wanted to say, extend my gratitude to the clerk's office and the Elections Department for all the work that they've done all year. I know there's still a lot of work happening with the canvas and everything to close out the election, but really some unprecedented, I might say virtually impossible, things to deal with from the state in terms of reforms and all that kind of thing, and to have planned, executed, and, and carried out a really smooth election. Under those circumstances, we really appreciate all the work that went into it, and yeah, I just want to say that. I look forward to hearing the update from the clerk when she's had a little bit, maybe a couple hours of sleep, so, thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I too want to thank everyone that was successful in the election. Also want to acknowledge all those that ran that weren't successful. Takes a lot to run for public office. You know, just looking at the election, I've, I've never seen a more toxic environment, not just at the federal level, but state, local, and it's, it's just, you know, discouraging. Everyone knows I'm pro-life. I don't make any excuses about that, but we had a top of the ticket from the one party saying that that's what they were, that was the issue that they are going to win on. And unfortunately, it, it, it didn't happen, but being someone running on a pro-life issue, I get attacked constantly with the, you know, I'm not going to go through the whole list of why I'm wrong. The one thing that I know I'm right on, and the thing that I stand up most about, is over 48% of the abortions that happen, happen to young African-American women. over 48% of the abortions that happen, happen to young African-American women, and that's discrimination. No one should have that decision on whether they're going to bring that child to full term because of their race or their economic status or any of that. So, I'm proud to say that, you know, I put my words and money where, you know, where my mouth is. And this evening, I'm going to be attending, you know, an event. When people say there are not places to help people bring their children that are in their womb to full term, there are, and one of them's located in my county commission district. They have the access center for the Pregnancy Resource Center. They're having their annual fundraiser this year, and I'll be in attendance for that. But I want to just talk with everyone that helps that organization out, churches, local organizations, to ensure that if someone wants to bring their child to full term without judgment, they'll do everything they can to make that happen and continue the success after that child's born. So, I'm very proud to acknowledge that, and I'm very proud of that organization that's located in my county commission district. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Haddas-C.
Thank you. Just before this morning's meeting began, Chair Stuck and I presented a proclamation, and Commissioner Brevi worked on it, I believe, last year, but to note that November is Family Court Awareness Month, and how we increase, to increase awareness in the importance of the family court system to keep our children safe and to act in the best interests of children. And the one change, you know, as this becomes a priority to save, you know, to protect our children, and the one change that we've made within the last year here in Kent County is to establish the Domestic Violence Court, inhabit staff by individuals knowledgeable about domestic violence and positioned to support the victims and the families and hold offenders accountable. So, it is good to note this as an action taken within the last year and to keep our children safe as they go through, as secondaries, as primaries, in our court systems for protection.
Thank you. Commissioner Brevi.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to speak about the election. I want to congratulate all of you who ran for reelection and were chosen, and then also, we have a number of incoming Commissioners, and congratulations to them. I'm looking forward to maybe attending a few less meetings next year. One thing, too, that I thought was interesting, for Kent County, the Democrat votes, there was 147,695, and this is related to the votes for the Kent County Commissioner districts. And then Republicans, there was 178,327. So, there's definitely a significant difference in the population of voters that turned out to vote for all of y'all. So, interesting, I'm glad people use their right to vote, and I look forward to what the commission does in the future.
Thank you. Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to inform the commission and even my public, if there's any listening, that I will be taking a brief leave of absence. I'm having spine surgery, but I'll be back at it after a couple weeks. So, that's the end of November, and then shortly into December, I will not be around, but I'll be back at it in December, and look forward to serving my public.
Thank you, and we, of course, wish you all the best in that. Anyone else? All right, if not, just a couple of things. First of all, a reminder that we do have a work session was scheduled to start at 10 o'clock today. So, once we adjourn, assuming we are able to adjourn, we will probably take 10 minutes and then reconvene, I think in this room, correct?
I believe so, yeah.
Back in this room for that work session, so please stick around for that. And then, at the last meeting, I think that was just before the election, I again encouraged all of you to demonstrate leadership in your communities as we go into a very contentious election process. It was everything I think we anticipated by way of contention, and it demonstrates that we are a pretty divided community across this country, including in our county. So, I again encourage you to show that leadership. I don't believe there's any place in the country that demonstrates closer to ground zero how these two diverse perspectives can work together for the public good, more than the county commission. So, I intend that we will continue to be the place where we show how that can happen. I'm not asking anyone to give up their perspectives, their beliefs, their positions on how we should move forward as a country, but I am asking you to continue to be committed to working together to do that so that we can, in fact, give this community what's entitled to. Thank you for that. I'm done pontificating, and I will ask for a motion to adjourn. You don't get to do it yet, though, Commissioner.
I'm speaking. Commissioner Brevi, that's me. I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the chair, to Thursday, November 21, 2024, 8:30 a.m., for an official meeting.
You may second it. All those in favor say yes. We are adjourned.